So, good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorva, here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance tonight. Mr. Dorchevitz, would you be happy to do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Item C is the approval of the agenda. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of today's agenda, Tuesday, December 10th, 2019.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is item D, approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions by the board?
Yes, let me get back on my soapbox. Once again, for our $250 we're spending at Napa on batteries and antifreeze and things that you could buy at a Plymouth Township business. Once again, and I will continue to bring this up all the time. The other thing on the fire department, once again, I'll get on the other soapbox with the mutual aid for Canton. Question, Chief, we have, on the little report, we have a number three for the mutual aid. Is that the station that they come out of? You know, I didn't bring a copy of that with me on that.
Well, let's look at it. We can call it up there.
There are pages 30 of 206.
You said page?
Page 30.
What do you want to look at?
The very top. Yeah, that little number three that is next to all of those. So, that's the Beck station that they're coming out of?
That's correct.
So, out of those four mutual aids we gave to Canton, they're all a minimum of 6.4 miles away from Station Three, up to eight miles. On a good day, it's 15 minutes. So, we're talking at least a half hour that our guys are out of the Plymouth Township.
Yeah, that's just travel time.
Yeah.
Plus the time that they're at the run.
Exactly, exactly. You know, and I see now we've added mutual aid received from Huron Valley.
That's been in reports for the last four years. It's just very infrequently.
What does it mean? Explain that.
What it means is that an HVA unit's closer and we elect not to send anybody else to the run. So, we just sent HVA and we're not able to respond. So, it's just HVA handling the run by themselves.
But there's nothing called really mutual aid because we don't give any mutual aid back to them, right?
Well, we do respond to every run with them and we assist them in every single run in the township.
So, why could we not respond?
Because we were busy on other runs.
We're in Canton. We were in Canton.
Well, I just checked the dates to see if they align.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and you'll see 11:27.
You can see it there.
11:27.
At the same time, we were at 44011 Five Mile Road.
Right.
With probably a fire because Northville Township Fire was there. I'm sure we're going to see the city of Plymouth, city of Northville. Nope, not at the same time.
Yeah, that Northville Township one.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah. It's, you know, I don't mind giving mutual aid for a fire, but mutual aid, once again, and the story's getting old that, you know, because we've got tremendous paramedics, we're going to go take care of it. So, again, I'll get on my soapbox every week I see these things, so, sorry.
Chief, I have a question for you as well. I noticed tonight we have a new document that would be the HVA report. Yes, this is the annual HVA report. I included it at the end of the fire department report. Now, that's the annual report, but this reflects the fact that we're under a contract with them now and this is a rather light document at this point. It's never been generated before for us and I think it's admittedly limited in the kind of information that we seek. I think what we should do, Chief, is in the weeks ahead, let's meet up with them again and request the kind of additional information that the contract calls for. The contract called that they had to have an annual report by this time, so they hurried up and got this together. They told me right away that they knew it was light and asked for feedback from us. I included it just so that they could be, we would make sure that HVA was compliant with the contract. Right. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Page 40, there's a word called captures in one of the charts on the police report. 911 captures? Page 47.
47.
What does that mean? Captures per day in November 2019.
Wow, they didn't get away.
They didn't get away. That many people are escaping? In the old days at Dehoco, they used to do it every weekend.
These are calls for service. It's the way that it's printed out through climate. It's the word capture. I'm not sure why, but these are 911 calls for service.
All right.
Call captures, successful calls. It's a strange word to use in that context. Right. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Supervisor. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. All those in favor of item D signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next is item E, public comments and questions, limited to three minutes. This is not your only opportunity during the meeting to comment on any item of concern. There will also be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. We also encourage questions on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular topic. So, at this point, anybody want to come forward? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to item F, new business. Item F, just as a precursor, item F1, 2, and 3 do sort of all have to be reviewed and considered in context of one another because they all do relate to one another. We're going to start with the public hearing on the MITC Brownfield Plan, then item 2 is the revocation of a soon-to-be-defunct Brownfield Plan, and then item 3 would be adoption of the new Brownfield Plan for the entire MITC Authority area. So, just keep that in mind. At this point, item F1 requires a public hearing, so I will, I need a motion to open the public hearing on the MITC Brownfield.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move we go into public hearing on the MITC Brownfield Plan.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are now in a public hearing on this item at 7:09 PM. Just by way of background, the MITC Brownfield Plan was unanimously adopted by the MITC Authority at our regular meeting about three weeks ago. The Brownfield Plan is really the next step in the development of the Five Mile Corridor, which is the MITC Brownfield Authority. The Authority, as you recall, was created by our board in February of 2018. They have now been organized. They've been sanctioned by the state. They've had several organizational meetings and strategy sessions. And since the summer of this year, the MITC has hired SME consulting engineers to develop a Brownfield Plan in consultation with attorneys from two law firms that have advised us on financing and brownfield law issues. The MITC Brownfield Plan does encompass now the entire area from Beck to Napier, which is all of the former Dehoco properties on the Plymouth Township side and the Dehoco properties on the Northville side, with the exception of the Robert Scott Prison Site, which is the northwest corner of Beck and Five Mile. So, with us tonight, we have representatives from SME and also from the Michigan Land Bank who are here to comment and answer any questions that you may have. I would also refer you to item F3, which is the Brownfield Plan itself, for any comments or questions that you may have on that. If I could have the reps from Land Bank and SME come forward, introduce yourselves for the record up here at the podium.
My name's Dan Cassidy and I'm a consultant here at SME advising on the Brownfield Plan and general Brownfield Consulting Services.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Ennis. I'm general counsel for the State Land Bank Authority. Jim Teschler of our office, who normally is very involved with this, is out of the state, so I'm standing in and hopefully all fill his big shoes.
Can you describe what is the Land Bank Authority?
Sure. The State Land Bank Authority is an entity, an agency, created by statute by the state of Michigan. We have about 10 staff people in Lansing and our purpose is we, for the majority of our inventory, receive tax-reverted properties from communities where the state handles the tax foreclosure process, or we have historic properties before the law changed. So, we currently have about 2,600, 2,700 properties across the entire state. We also have certain properties such as Dehoco that were provided to us through the state legislative process. We have perhaps three or four other properties like that. We at one time had the state fairgrounds. So, what we attempt to do is to, we manage those properties, we try and sell them and encourage development to increase the local tax base as opposed to us holding them where there's no taxes whatsoever.
Thank you. That's great overview. Appreciate that.
Any other questions from the board? So, this again relates more to item F3 than the, obviously, the public hearing itself.
I have a question for the consultant. Are you an employee of SME or an independent consultant?
Yeah, I'm a principal and vice president of SME.
All right.
I live here in the city and my home office is in the township here.
So, just give us a brief summary of what's the purpose of the Brownfield Plan and if it's approved tonight, what is the next step on the approval process?
Sure. So, if you have a copy of the plan, I'd direct you to page 4, which is, it's a project summary. It kind of gives you the overview of what we're talking about. So, the purpose of the plan is to, it really serves two purposes and this is not all that different from a typical Brownfield scenario. I'm used to doing these on individual parcels, I'll admit. This is probably, at 800 acres, I'm going to say this might be the largest Brownfield kind of plan and site I've worked on. However, the basics here are very typical of a Brownfield situation. So, what we're trying to do is accomplish two things. We've got, to support the redevelopment of the MITC area, we need to find a way to fund the infrastructure. There's about a $30 million estimated cost there. The Michigan's Brownfield Program provides a lot of opportunities to assist in situations like this. And in this case, infrastructure in particular, which is a priority for us to figure out a way to support this area. Because right now, the infrastructure is underdeveloped for what's the plan of the MITC.
Is this the page you wanted us to refer to?
Oh, no. No.
Okay.
Oh, go, I'm sorry, into the plan. I didn't realize it's in the package. Right there. Yep, that summary. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, and actually, now that I think about it, since you're running the show there, there's a figure further in the document. Maybe that's a good background. It shows the MITC boundaries. So, it's Appendix A of the. There you go. Perfect. Excellent, thank you very much. So, that is the MITC areas proposed. And so, this Brownfield will encompass the entire boundaries of that area. There's 12 parcels in there. And so, I mentioned priority number one being the infrastructure. Priority number two is really the Brownfield conditions on each of the parcels. So, that's a little more closer to home for me and what we typically like to do here is we're trying to figure out a way to make these projects economically viable and kind of level the economic playing field. The conditions on these parcels right now, you know, some are better than others, if you will, but they do prohibit redevelopment. And so, Michigan's Brownfield Program was specifically created to address these issues, provide an opportunity to level the playing field and then allow for development or attract development. So, the basics of this plan is to provide an umbrella kind of vehicle to allow for this, these redevelopments to occur.
And each of these parcels are adjacent and contiguous, and that is a key concept in Michigan Brownfield Law, that even though maybe one of these sites may not be contaminated or may not be as contaminated as an adjacent site, taken together, it is deemed by the state as an overall Brownfield facility or site. That means that the tax capture from these parcels, as they are developed over time, can be used to redevelop the infrastructure in the area. So, that would primarily be the rehabilitation, the widening, the rebuilding of Five Mile Road, the widening and rehab of Ridge Road, then also the installation of the necessary utilities along Five Mile as well. So, it's, this is really, it's a 30-year vision for the MITC Corridor. We do, we are fortunate that we do have some development going in already on the Northville side and soon on our side as well. And parcel 14 in the salmon color there is currently owned by Audient and they are, they're aware that they are also part of the Brownfield Authority and they're invited to all of our meetings and we have met with them separately on several occasions. So, the Brownfield Plan is something that is, it's truly a living document, but it's a blueprint. It is, we have to start somewhere with a baseline estimate on costs, on infrastructure improvement, on tax capture and on anticipated development in the area, and to define the area for tax capture purposes. So, it's not like we're going to get $600 million tomorrow to make this work, but we're going to have the framework in place to allow this development to go forward and to capture the necessary revenue under the state Brownfield Law, to reinvest that money into the corridor, which just should have, you know, in theory and in practicality, it just has a snowball effect that just leads to more economic development and growth and potential in the area. It's also my understanding that for any, so let's say, for example, Area 10 there on the far west corner, that's currently still under contract with the city of Detroit. But let's say that's developed down the road and there's a plan to put some light industrial or high-tech stuff in there. Even though that may not be envisioned right now in the Brownfield Plan, the specific project, that project still has to come back and be an amendment to the Brownfield Plan that is then approved by the MITC Authority and by this board as well in the future. These do not go to the, even though Plymouth Township has an independent Brownfield Authority that covers the entire township, this is an authority within an authority. So, any projects that get underway here, they have to comply with that Brownfield Plan for the MITC. Then they have to be approved by MITC Board and also approved by Plymouth Township Board or by Northville if it was in their jurisdiction. So, there's a lot of belt and suspenders here. There's a lot of checks and balances in terms of our oversight and approvals of projects that happen here.
Yeah, and may I add to that list? This is, you mentioned step, I guess we're in step two because the MITC Board has approved this plan. And then we'll also get approval of Northville Township on Thursday.
On Thursday.
The, once we get all the local approvals set and resolutions in our hands, assuming we get that far, the next step is to take it to the state. And so, the Eagle, the formerly Michigan Department of Equality, now Eagle, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, so that both of those agencies of the state will also review and approve these plans, this plan.
Does Department of Treasury have to sign off as well?
No.
No? Okay.
So, why are these parcels so asymmetrical and there's gaps? Is this the contaminated area or are these the entire parcel?
No, Bob, there's no, there's no gaps. Each parcel has its own history and in some cases, its own level of contamination or ownership. So, for example, parcel 11, the brown parcel is now, was ours and is now Hillside.
Right.
14 is Audient. 15 is the old prison itself, which is now under contract with Redeco.
So, what's that gap between 13 and 15?
Oh, it's.
And between 10 and 11?
It's wetlands. It's undevelopable property currently. I mean, it's, it could be developed, but it's complicated. We would have to get approvals from DEQ and FEMA and all those guys.
But if it's contaminated, will this Brownfield clean up those?
Yes.
Undevelopable areas?
Yeah. The, if you're looking at the map from, I don't know, from right to left, Area 15, which is the old prison itself, is by far the most contaminated, developable area. If you go to the, to the far corner of the Authority area where 14 and 15 meet up in the lower right-hand corner, you see a green area there. That's forest. That is actually area that is essentially landfill and it's heavily contaminated and it has been all, it's been the professional judgment of all the consultants that that is not developable at all and is not subject to cleanup. It's not going to, it's not going to help.
So, it won't be disturbed?
It will not be disturbed. It will just be there and it cannot be built.
Can it be a parking lot?
I don't know, I don't know about that, but it's, it certainly cannot be used for building construction, for the pilings and foundation work that needs to be done. It's enough of a challenge right now on parcel 15. And then that gap there is wetlands. Parcel 13, that was actually, Chuck, the old Veritas site that we're going to rescind tonight.
That's the Silo site.
Yeah. And then the Veritas is going to move across the street to Site 11. If you look at the Northville site, Site, is that 8? I don't know, that light blue area.
That's the gun range.
That's the gun range. That's contaminated with lead. And then when you move right to the west, it's either parcel 8 or 9 has arsenic contamination because it was an apple orchard. So, each parcel has its own history, its own story to tell and, but taken together, they are all adjacent and contiguous Brownfield Sites that are all subject to tax capture and cleanup and redevelopment. And if there's no cleanup needed, so for example, parcel 10, if there's no contamination there, the tax capture generated on that site would theoretically go to rebuild the roads and utilities serving the entire area.
Would you mind if I just ask a couple of specific questions? In the financing forecast, you divide state capture and local capture. Does that mean that the state capture can only be used to reimburse certain expenses and the local capture can only be used to reimburse certain expenditures?
No, actually, really good question. No, the reasoning for the distribution is the approval process. So, tonight, we're essentially approving the local tax portion.
Okay.
Once we go to the state, we'll be asking them to approve the state school tax portion.
Okay.
But we can apply the tax increment to any of these costs.
Okay. And in the plan too, it says upfront, three mils for the state education tax will be given to the state revolving fund. What is the state revolving fund?
Yeah, so that was a program, I can't remember when legislature passed that, but it was several years back. It was a funding mechanism to reestablish the, some of the grant and loan program at the state level to fund Brownfield cleanup across the state. So, it was an amendment to Act 31, Michigan's Brownfield Statute, to require all Brownfield plans passed in the state to include that three mils capture right off the top. So, we really don't have a choice there.
So, in addition to that question, the six mil school tax, the 18 mil school tax, how is that going to be treated in the capture? There's 18 plus 6, is that right? Typically on commercial property for schools. And then there's the bond portion of the school millage, which is an addition. So, does that get captured or does it go back to the, does it go to the schools or does it end up for cleanup?
Yeah, the only, the only, I'm going to really double-check my math here in the tables, but the only millages we can't capture are usually the debt millages.
School debt?
Yeah.
You can't capture school debt. You can't, sorry, you can't capture the school debt. You can't capture the zoo tax, the zoo and you can't capture the DIA. Those are the three that can't be captured.
But the 18 mils and the six mils for schools can be recaptured to clean this up?
Correct. Yeah, it's actually, they lay that all out every single millage on page 145.
Anything else, Mark?
Oh, yeah, I can see right here.
That was the eye test.
The whole list.
The state uses the smallest font I've ever seen. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one. How, this will probably affect the attorney, compliance to ensure that the recaptured funds are spent lawfully and not for things like a developer wants to, you know, add some feature to his building. Who is monitoring, auditing compliance? Because there's a lot of money that gets recaptured here over the next 30 or 40 years.
Yep, you're looking at them.
You?
My firm will be partially responsible in coalition with, of course, the MITC Board. But that's, that's part of the services we offer is we're going through this. The only costs, the Brownfield Statute dictates which costs are eligible for reimbursement. That becomes the guide for all future reimbursement requests. Those reimbursement requests will come to the MITC Board. The MITC Board has retained SME to be their consultant to help review these requests. So, you know, I guess the MITC Board would be the first line of defense and then SME as the consultant too would review and make sure. So, yes, it's a great question. You cannot reimburse legally, you cannot reimburse certain costs and those would be rejected if they were even submitted. There are firms that I'm familiar with that are already working on some of these properties. They're very familiar with the Brownfield Law as well and the procedure for submitting those requests is pretty standard.
The MITC Authority has also hired Miller Canfield as its financial counsel, Faousson Bond as its Brownfield Counsel. Land Bank is a member of the MITC, which is the only place in Michigan where I think that's happening. So, the Land Bank itself is a, has a seat at the table. They've, that's, they've got their eyes on all of this as well. We have to comply with all of the state laws as any governmental entity. We have to file an audit. We have hired auditors as well, the MITC Authority has. So, we have to, you know, we have to comply with all of the financial standards that any local government has to and really in a more, I think in even a more detailed and thorough manner because of the multi-jurisdictional approach that we're using here.
Another question. The, so, the first .5 mils of the SET goes to the state. The next 30% of the tax capture can be used to reimburse infrastructure costs. Then after that, everything else can be used to reimburse the developers. Is that 30% standard or negotiable or where did that come from?
Yeah, and I'm going to defer a little bit here to Kurt on this because my understanding, the way we've set up this plan and Kurt, or excuse me, I apologize to the supervisor.
That's okay.
When we, when we introduced the project, the idea that this plan is really an umbrella document because we don't know all of the exact plans for all the parcels, that's absolutely true. And so, the way we've structured this is to allow maximum flexibility in the future and I believe it's envisioned, this is where I'm looking for some support, is I believe the envision here of the MITC Board with these is as projects come to the board for specific requests, the distribut, we're going to have to do that. we're going to have to do that, the first three mils we're stuck with, but the percentage of infrastructure and the percent that would go to say a developer and in what sequence, I believe that's going to be left open to be negotiated by the site. But the concept is it's going to go through infrastructure first, then to developer, but I think the percentage is negotiable.
It is because each developer has their own, they want to maximize their revenue, if you will. They want to get as much as they can and that's their job. And so it's our job to come back and say, this is eligible, this is not eligible, this is eligible, this is not eligible. But again, for the development of this plan, for the filing of this plan, we have to establish a baseline somewhere. But again, each individual project then has to be examined by the board, approved, brought back to this board, approved, and then the developer can be on his way.
I guess here's my concern. And I love this plan and I love the creativity of it. I have one major concern and that is the infrastructure. Will developers want to invest in Plymouth Township without that infrastructure in place? And I think the answer is probably no. The way this is structured right now with 30, we get the first 30% to go to reimburse our infrastructure costs, which are going to be $30 million, that won't be paid off according to this schedule for 27 years. Okay? So we're not going to be able to invest in the infrastructure, is my point, unless we get a lot more than 30% or we start going to the townships and say, hey, townships, we need $30 million to invest in infrastructure. Otherwise, we're never going to be able to afford to invest in the infrastructure before the developers come on board.
You're talking about sewer and water? A road is the state and county, that's not the township.
No, the authority would pay the county to rebuild Five Mile using the tax capture.
But the county would also put in Act 51 money?
They could.
They should, I guess.
They could. The landfill could put in money too. We are hoping for that as well.
Where's the 30 million number come from?
Some breakdowners.
It's a cost estimate. It's on the schedule within that plan.
27 million, yeah.
I think it is a strong desire of the authority that the state of Michigan would finance the upfront costs. And I don't want to put Land Bank on the spot, but it's been, we've made no secret about it that because DeHoco Prison is the focal point of the project, that we're intending that the state of Michigan either through the state revolving loan fund or appropriations from Treasury would be able to front the money that would then be reimbursed at little or no interest rate over the next 20 to 30 years. We've had positive discussions with the Land Bank along those lines and we're confident that the new administration will assist us in that effort.
Well, almost all of this pollution was created by the city of Detroit.
Yes.
Not the state of Michigan. And not Plymouth or not Northville.
Yeah, the DeHoco, I believe, it was referred to earlier as a landfill, which I think is a polite way of referring to it. It actually was a, it is not licensed, it was a dump. Back before the prison facilities were put in place there. So it probably does go back to the city of Detroit, but we now have it. The state land bank. Just to the supervisor's points though, and again Jim not being here, I think that the two items you mentioned in terms of funding sources are not land bank sources in terms of the revolving fund that I assume those MDC or MSF, I don't know if there's sources there. And then the, I forget the second one you mentioned, oh Treasury.
Treasury.
Yeah. Again, we have no control over Treasury. We do, certainly we've been involved and have been supportive of all these discussions, coordinating, setting up meetings with MDC and so forth. So that was part of our role that we wanted to play and were willing to play to assist the development.
Well, I believe this, now that State Fairgrounds is well underway, I think this is now the largest brownfield land bank project in the state of Michigan. And the state is definitely aware of that. And I think that they are also aware that to jumpstart this project, that they are going to have to put some money down to get things going.
It's definitely the largest acreage wise, individual parcel. We view it as a high priority and high visibility. So it is a priority one for us. We want this to succeed and we will do everything within our power to make it succeed.
Good, okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have a curiosity question. The gun range, which I think is number eight, what method are you going to use to clean up the lead?
It's a dig and haul.
Pardon?
It's not complicated. It's going to be dig and haul.
You're going to haul it all away or you're going to sift it on site?
No, we're probably going to haul it, even the soil itself is contaminated with lead.
It's too.
It'd be too expensive, yeah. I mean, you could employ magnets or some other mechanisms, but it's lead. It's not iron. So I mean, there's not a lot of technology to employ there that would be economical. So yeah, at this point, we're proposing a dig and haul.
So that's the largest single expense is that site or it's somewhere on the other ones?
The largest single expense is the DeHoco prison site itself. Everything there was a landfill to some extent. When we did the preliminary, when Redeco did the preliminary soil borings and Phase 2 work, they determined that there are some areas where there is no contamination, no landfill. There are other areas where it's 14 to 15 feet deep of fill. This is predominantly household waste generated in the city of Detroit during the 1940s, 50s and 60s. And it was just dumped in the back. You can build on that legally without disturbing the site, but it requires very deep pilings. It's going to require proper footings. You're going to have to seal off and possibly off gas some of the contamination that's there. It's going to have to be monitored forever, but it's not going to be removed. It's basically going to be built on and there's many safe ways of doing that.
So mining it out, mining out the trash is not feasible or economical?
No. And that has been looked at. I mean, they've thought, one of the plans was to just dig it up and transport it and it's just, I think it was the professional opinion of the state and the consultants and Redeco that it was just not feasible to do that. Redeco claims that they've already put $4.5 million of their own money into the site to determine what level of rehabilitation is needed. But Chuck, if you remember that other site that I showed you, that forested site, I presume that the situation there is so bad that they've all determined that it's just not worth building on.
So one final question. What is the railroad CSX? Are they participating in anything? Or they're not known for being proactive cooperative, but could we get them involved? Or?
Yes. We actually had to involve CSX in the sale of Parcel 11 because the railroad intersects it at two locations. We, the developers, Hillside are building a water main right now from Halyard Road northward to Five Mile. That water main, which currently doesn't exist, will service Parcel 11. But we had to go around and under CSX and Kevin Bennett spent a considerable amount of time and grief dealing with CSX and creating a contract that was part of our final sale agreement with, a right-of-way agreement with Hillside.
So the railroad did allow a right-of-way?
Well, with many conditions, yeah. I mean, we can put a water main underneath the railroad and that was part of our sale agreement with Hillside. But what I want to point out too is that we know that CSX is going to come into play throughout the life of this project. We're going to intersect it on Ridge, on Five and on the creek that you see there as well. These are going to be serious engineering challenges because we're going to have to put water lines, sewer lines, road reconstruction, road regrading the rail and the street. So our experience with CSX on the Hillside project, which created at least two or three months delay in the sale of that site, what we're going to do is we're actually going to invite CSX to the table. We are going to have a separate meeting with them, our engineers, the MITC engineers and the staff, the board. We're going to meet with CSX privately, tell them what's going on, get them involved. And then they're going to have a permanent invitation to all of our meetings and they're going to know what's going on because we can't afford to have them stall or say oops every time we want to do something here. They're an integral part. And frankly, they've been, I've used them as part of our selling point. We have been approached by businesses that have been interested in these sites and they want rail, they want rail traffic. So it's actually a positive that we've got them in the district, but we have to make them more of an active player, just like we've been doing with DTE and consumers and Wayne County and the landfill.
Why, are they going to build a spur off of?
Well, I mean, you could have somebody, let's say Parcel 9 up there in Northville. I mean, that's a pretty quiet site right now. You could have, you could build a spur off of that and service a variety of businesses.
Take trucks off the road?
Yeah.
People are looking to reduce traffic and the railroad was, that was the way things used to go.
Yeah.
But this will be the largest expense as part of infrastructure is rebuilding Five Mile at CSX.
Five Mile, so the creek is involved, that's where the creek and the road?
Yeah, the road and the creek.
Come all together.
That piece is, I think, what, almost $5 million on its own, I think.
That's going to be an engineering challenge, as I pointed out, yeah.
So once again, who pays for the Five Mile reconstruction?
The tax, the tax capture generated by the project is used to rebuild the infrastructure along Five Mile.
But doesn't somebody have to borrow the money and then pay it back with the tax capture?
It could be that way, but we are assuming that there will be a state funding that will then be, we will be reimbursing the state. And possibly the county if they want to put money in, but. Okay. Any questions from the public? Alrighty. That being said then, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Clerk? Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed at 7:43. So next, we're going to move on to item two. This is the revocation of the Veritas Site 3 brownfield plan. This was described in the public hearing. This is the site at the southeast corner of Five and Ridge. This is part of the old prison site itself. This is where Verita was going to go. And back in September of 2018, we approved the brownfield plan for that site, but now it will no longer be necessary as we are going to hopefully adopt a brownfield plan that will supplant this one. So we have been advised by the attorneys for the brownfield authority that it is necessary for us to revoke the brownfield redevelopment plan and other related documents for Site 3, also known as 47-505 Mile and the Verita property. Any questions?
Refresh my memory. This company was in a big hurry, they're an underground.
Yes.
So a year and a half ago, they wanted to build, 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 but what happened?
They were attracted to the site across the street.
So they delayed their project two years?
They were willing to delay the project in order to achieve, I think, a larger property and probably a larger facility.
So it'll be in one of those lots that was in the property formerly owned by Plymouth Township?
Yes.
They'll be the first occupant of that property?
As of now, yeah, unless somebody comes along.
Remember, they're already in Plymouth Township.
Right.
They're working in a variety of buildings. They're doing a lot of outside storage that they don't want to do, but they need to, they want to have-
So this will be a consolidation in a site that they like?
Yes.
Exactly.
And more than likely, I think a larger-
A larger site than the one that they had here.
When do they expect to break ground?
I would think, I would have to check with Hillside, but I would think in the spring of next year.
Yeah, that was-
Because you know, Hillside's cleared just about everything that they need to now at Site 11. Okay. Any questions by the board, by the public? Mr. Clerk?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-108, authorizing the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees to revoke the brownfield redevelopment plan and all other related documents for Site 3, 47-505 Mile Road, formerly known as the Veritas property, pursuant to the attached resolution and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign any other required documents to further effectuate this resolution.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item three. This is the adoption of the brownfield plan, which we have discussed extensively in the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments by the board or the public?
Mr. Supervisor?
Clerk?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-109, authorizing the Board of Trustees to approve the attached resolution, approving the Michigan International Technology Center, MITC, redevelopment authority brownfield plan and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign any other documents required to effectuate this resolution.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you're free to leave if you want or you can stick around. It's up to you.
Thank you.
We're having fun.
Thank you for being here. Next is item four. This is the Henry Ford Hospital Project PUD amendments. We have in front of you the, let me just, by way of background, pardon me? Yes. Just by way of background, there's, back in November of 2016, the township and Park Plaza Shopping Center entered into a PUD agreement. PUD is a planned unit development. It is basically a contract that controls the use and operation and what?
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt you, but I'd like to, I was thinking about this. I'd like to request extension from this. I work for a competitor and we're building a very similar facility two miles away.
I believe under our rules of procedure, that requires a unanimous vote, but let's get to that.
Okay.
Let's get to that, okay? But we will certainly, I will certainly honor your request.
Okay.
Okay. So we, the former board adopted the PUD agreement. PUD basically controls the development of a particular site by contract as opposed to the normal procedures of going before the Planning Commission, the Building Department, the Zoning Board, et cetera, et cetera. It's really designed to streamline a particular site in the best interests of economic development and community interest. Since that time, you know, the original intent of that PUD was for retail. And Chuck and Bob were both on the board back then and I think I was at that meeting. I used to, I was hitting those meetings quite frequently in 2016 and-
Yeah, you were wishing for a Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, that's right. And we, the board was looking for some kind of a retail development that would take over the existing Kmart building. As we know, economic conditions across the country now are just killing big box retail. Almost every community has at least one dark store, as they call it, or a big box store that is no longer viable because people are shopping online and they're just not using those stores that were conceived in the 60s and 70s. So we've been approached by Henry Ford Hospital to allow, to permit a medical facility- a medical facility, that would be an outpatient facility, a very low level emergency room, I believe chief, it's called a Level 4 center. So it's one of the, it's really more of a walk-in facility for people with aches and pains, tummy aches, sprains, sports injuries, et cetera. And also retaining two of the outbuildings on the corner of Hagerty and Ann Arbor Road that may or may not be used for related medical facilities, they may be used for other services as well, including, you know, fast food or coffee or light retail, something like that. We really don't know yet. So the proposed amendments to the PUD before you would allow Henry Ford Hospital to develop the property. As we all know, the Kmart property is just about down right now, they've been tearing it down all week. And it also adds Henry Ford Health System as a party and signatory to the PUD agreement. Laura Haw is ill and could not be with us tonight, but she has also reviewed this amendment as well as Kevin Bennett. The other thing that we need to mention is that Kevin did supply us with a revised resolution regarding this project that designates the water tap fees to reflect the use of the property as a clinic rather than office, and that was requested by Mr. Felrath as well as Mr. Bennett. And we, under our water tap fee schedule, we have a variety of uses, one of them is office, one is clinic, and one is hospital. And as you can imagine, they all have different requirements. So clinic seems to be the middle ground category that would most likely reflect the type of activity that is going on at this facility. It's not a hospital in the true, traditional sense, people will not be staying there overnight. This is going to be more of an outpatient facility, probably some light surgery, colonoscopies, knee replacements, things like that, where you will be in and out on the same day. There will be the emergency room, and I believe there will be some offices, but again, we don't, we don't know for sure the extent of that until we really are able to dive into the details of the building layout and all of the uses that will be contemplated at the site. I've been told that there may even be a Starbucks inside the building. So we have different uses and different, different types of facilities that'll be contained in the site. So this, this resolution reflects that fact, and I would recommend your approval. Kevin Bennett has worked extensively on it, and he is also available with any questions. I think we also have representatives here from the developer and from Henry Ford Hospital as well. But this will allow us to take this project to the next level, and we're thrilled that Henry Ford has come to the community and that they're, they're going to really make this a showcase for, for Ann Arbor Road, an entryway to the, to the community. And I think it will, it has already begun to spur extra economic development in the corridor. So if there's any questions, I can take them, or Kevin?
The only thing I would add to what you've said is that the resolution does discuss three possible modifications to the proposed amendment. The first, as you talked about, was the correction of the water tap fees to reflect the use of the property as a clinic rather than an office. The second would be to permit the planner to review and if necessary modify some minor changes in the proposed amendment, minor changes related to signs and building heights. And the third would be to continue to permit the Administrative Review Committee to perform final review and if necessary modify site plan changes for the final development site plan. And that all of those things would be subject to final approval by the Township Attorney, the Township Planner, and the Administrative Review Committee. These are technical specifications that we're talking about. The overall concept is what's before the board tonight, the overall concept is to allow Henry Ford as a signatory to the contract and to allow, the original contract specifically excluded from permitted uses, inpatient services, urgent care centers, clinics and similar uses. The amendment would specifically allow the use of the property as a medical facility.
And Kevin, it also applies to the proposed outbuildings on Ann Arbor Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why is the PUD designation required here? Is it the height of the building or?
No.
What is the purpose?
The PUD project allows variances from this, or.
From zoning?
Yeah, variances from the zoning ordinance. Variance, I guess, is not maybe a good word because that implies Zoning Board of Appeals. I would say it allows flexibility in planning.
Yeah.
It would be more flexible than ordinary permitted uses under specific zoning districts. It allows like a blend of permitted uses within a given land use.
It also provides maximum flexibility for the developer and the township to collaborate on the appearance, the use, and the ingress egress landscaping, et cetera, of the site. And in our case, our, this board amended our PUD ordinance, I believe, back in 2017 because we were expecting a hotel on Ann Arbor Road. So as far as height requirements go, they're within those parameters.
They are.
They're asking for a slight deviation in those parameters because it will be, I believe, a three-story building, but there will be a sort of a skylight feature along the, along the height, the top of the building that requires a little extra space, even though it's not an additional floor, it's more of a skylight, for lack of a better word. And that allows a more of an architectural feature that will be incorporated into the building. The Administrative Review Committee is contemplated in the PUD in order to streamline the review process. The Administrative Review Committee consists of the Planning Director, Laura Haw, Mark Lewis, and Dennis Sabolsky, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission. They've already met with the developers several times and they've been, they're very, they've been making great progress in terms of agreeing to what the site plan will look like, the parking lot, the building facade, signage. There will be a new feature at Hagerty and Ann Arbor Road that will be a more of attractive entry sign and welcome sign for the hospital to notify visitors that that's where they are. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of good, good stuff that they're, that they're working on. The developer also has to comply with the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, they are going to be storing underground, similar to what Kroger was mandated to do, and they're well aware of that. So they're, you know, they're progressing with all of their necessary approvals and permits.
So this was brought to the study session and Planning Commission a short, short time ago. There was some concern about it being, the plan being overparked, too much parking?
There actually, according to Laura Haw, there's, there's an overabundance of parking, they have more parking than they need.
Right.
But in our meetings with Henry Ford, they have said that they truly need every available space that they can get. What we've done is asked them to make it a greener area. They had already had plans to install landscaping islands, we just want that greened up more with more trees and bushes, et cetera. But they, they, it will certainly look better than what we've got now. Okay.
I have a question.
Chuck.
This has to do with Bennett Water and Sewer Benefit Fees, where we're designating this as a clinic before we have seen a drawing. Traditionally, the way it's done is the Water Department reviews the drawing and makes a decision on what the benefit fees are. Why are we, because a lot may change, but by the time they get a final drawing, why are we locking in clinic now? It may be more beneficial, in other words, a lower cost for Henry Ford, once they have the final drawing, or it may be they owe more money. So why are we getting the Planning Department involved in the water benefit classification system? I know some of you think that our fees are too high, but I think it'd be better not to put this in there, just leave it, use our process, which has been used typically to collect the water, calculate and collect it. So I, it's reducing flexibility and maybe not accurately depicting it, because once you look at the floor plan and the drawing, and if you have a Starbucks, or you have two outbuildings, are you going to classify the two outbuildings as clinics? And they're restaurants?
I think that this proposed amendment would allow flexibility. The main building is what's contemplated as a medical facility. If that proposed use changes, then the.
Then you'd have to come back and change this PUD. I'm saying make it streamlined so you don't have to have the PUD involved in the decision on what the water benefit charges.
I understand, I follow what you're saying conceptually. What I'm saying is that this amendment specifically contemplates the use of the principal building to be a medical facility.
Great, I understand, I'm just talking about the specific language, which I have never seen in a PUD here, that talks about the classification for water and sewer benefit charges.
The reason that's in there is because the applicant came to the board and proposed in the amendment that the water tap characteristic be used as office. Not clinic. And office.
Is lower.
In the, yeah, in the opinion of Patrick Felrath, he and I have talked about this briefly, is not an accurate designation for this proposed use. It would be a substantial savings for the applicant on the water fee.
Right, so the applicant was trying to lower the water benefit fees.
Yeah, by mislabeling the, the use of the principal building as office rather than clinic.
In the end, the drawing is what depicts it, but.
Well, the individual use is what ultimately depicts it, but there's ample precedent when, let me use the lock performance facility as an example. It's a manufacturing facility that uses a lot of water. Couple of years ago, they built a 250,000 square foot addition that we had assessed for water fees, for water fee purposes as manufacturing. And they came in at a very high number. They came to us and basically appealed and said, we're not using this for manufacturing, we're using it for storage. And we went into the site, Felrath, my, Pat went in, I'd been in there previously, I knew what the site, this addition looked like. And so we adjusted it accordingly. So there's, the fee schedule itself provides us with flexibility based on.
That's why I said, you have the maximum flexibility if you.
Well, I mean, doing, saying nothing, keeping it silent makes it a lot more iffy for us and the developer, and we would have to, it would be like starting from scratch, and they would, they would be coming in at, well, we want it this way, and we're going to come in at, we want it this way. The way the fee schedule works is, we have, we have a wide variety of permitted uses under the fee schedule.
No.
So the analysis that we employed was, office seemed certainly too, too broad.
Too light.
Too light. It's the Goldilocks complex, you know, it was, it's just right or too hot or too cold. Hospital certainly seemed overly burdensome because it's not a hospital where you're going to have multiple, multiple rooms with bathrooms and showers and sinks and everything. Nobody's going to be staying there overnight. But clinic seemed to be a good fit. And again, between, between Patrick, the Building Department, and Laura Haw, we can fine tune that over time, but we have to, we have to establish a baseline on where we're, where we're going to be starting off from.
The other, the other thing I would add is that the amendment, again, specifically states that the use of the principal building is a medical facility. That is part of the PUD contract.
Agreed.
So if they want to change the use of the principal building, they would need another amendment to the PUD contract. And then if there is another amendment, because the use changes from medical facility to something else, then the water tap fee characterization could be modified at that time also.
All right, for you and Patrick, if a restaurant, a Chick-fil-A decides to be in the outlot, what will you do for the water benefit charge for that facility?
The ordinance.
A restaurant has a higher use than a clinic.
Let's say it's a coffee shop, I'm sorry.
What the ordinance states, I'll read it to you, is it says, "When primary uses contain other secondary uses, the total factor shall be the summation of the applicable separate factors." For example, bowling alley factor plus bar factor plus restaurant factor equals total factor. So if there are different uses in the outbuildings, those will not necessarily be characterized as clinics for water tap fee purposes.
Didn't hear what he said.
Okay.
What the amendment says is that the principal building, the use of the principal building will be medical facility. So the contract, or the amendment to the contract with respect to water use tap fees is limited to the principal building. If there are other, if there are outbuildings, which I think that there are going to be, those will have their own water use charges.
And again, Chuck, because this PUD that was agreed two years ago contemplated outbuildings as well as a large retail facility, so we're kind of locked into that format. You hear what I'm saying? I mean, it's.
Not for benefit fees, though.
Well.
Water benefit.
But for purposes of the amendment of the PUD, we are, we are.
For the PUD, the building and all that, I understand that.
We would examine, short answer is, we would examine the outbuildings as freestanding facilities based on their characteristics, just like we would anybody else.
So what happens if Henry Ford Hospital System decides they want to put a 20-bed facility in there? Will we recalculate the water benefit fees?
I think we would, we would have to based on.
What is, you're shaking your head, what is it?
Based on that, but, so, we have a representative of the developer.
Brian Amon, on behalf of the developer and.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Brian Amon, Attorney at Law, on behalf of the developer and also in conjunction with Henry Ford. The agreement specifies the actual uses per the ordinance and the PUD agreement, and an overnight stay would not be allowed, we'd have to come back for an ordinance.
Right, let's say we let you come back.
And that would obviously require an amendment of all aspects of the agreement. And so, as to relate to your question, so it would be one domino causing several other dominos to fall. And I just want to, bottom line, congratulate the Township because the old statement about, to those who wait, good things come, this is a great thing, this is the equivalent of getting up in the 9th inning with two outs and two strikes and hitting a grand slam. The nature of the use and the cost per square foot of construction of this project, which will be around $900 per square foot in some aspects, this is going to be a tremendous impact for this Township as it relates to taxable value for things. So this is a great outcome for you, and I want to congratulate you on that.
So you expect this to be a taxable facility? It's going to be on the tax rolls?
There are many aspects that are, that are essentially going to be taxable within this facility. The entire facility may not, based on the structure, but when you have aspects within it, your assessor will be working at income-producing, leasable and all, every time they have practice groups and different functions in there, there'll be various, great aspects. And as it relates to the property value itself, yes.
All right, so you're, Henry Ford has built facilities like this elsewhere in the Detroit Metro area?
I represent, Henry Ford, I represent the developer, but yes, they have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can you tell me what percentage of that is taxable and the similar ones?
I can't, and it always varies on an analysis by the appraiser in every instance, understanding the nature of the contractual relationship, actual services provided and how it's structured throughout the ownership of the organization.
Actual services provided?
Right.
By what, the physicians?
It's by, is it by an employee, is it by a license, is it by a contractor, is it by a leased facility, those kinds of things. So that's not contemplated in any aspect of this agreement, and that'll be treated under Michigan law.
And we are meeting with, internally with our assessing consultants in January to, for us to begin the internal discussions on what that's going to look like. We're going to have many different medical and business operations happening on this site that some will be taxable and some will not.
Right, yeah. It's not affecting the PUD agreement itself, but it's just.
Okay, any other questions, comments by the board, by the public?
Oh, who is the developer, since that's your client?
Developer is essentially the same as the element that was underneath Park Plaza, which is now primarily consumed by what is known as Grand Saquon entity that has been developing stuff around, obviously, the state and the region and the country for a lot of years. But, but Henry Ford will actually purchase its own site, build and develop and do its own work. And so Henry Ford is buying and actually purchasing the site. They will, and then Park will be transforming into owning the outlots, the outlot that will remain and developing that.
So Grand Saquon will still be involved?
In the outlots.
In the outlots.
Right.
Outlots. And so that's who you're representing, Grand Saquon?
Yeah, and we are the underlying owners of the site as principal owners of the Park entity. That's right. We're the ones who came into the PUD back in 2016, have worked with the Township to try to bring this project to fruition, so.
Okay, when this is all done, then Henry Ford will own the land of, some of the land, but it's not under. Okay, when this is all done, then Henry Ford will own the land of, some of the land that is not under the outlots.
Yeah, the, everything but the outlots, that's correct. That's actually called out in the agreement in the depiction of the exhibit.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the public?
Do we need to address Bob's issue before?
No, I'm, I'm there.
You got one?
Yeah. Oh, John, yeah.
Very, very briefly.
What's your name?
36-year resident and 42-year attorney in Wayne County. Perhaps Mr. Amon knows what I'm going to say. As a member of the community, we are thrilled that this Henry Ford facility is coming in to Ann Arbor Road. Those of us in the northwest corner of Wayne County, we've had to travel to Detroit, we've had to travel to Woodhaven for, um, uh, services from Henry Ford Hospital. And, uh, with all kindness and respect, I want to thank the representatives from Henry Ford for the attorney that you chose to represent you here tonight. He, the attorney who's representing you here tonight, Mr. Amon, happens to have a widespread, uh, reputation for, uh, the highest credibility. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you, John. Okay, Mr. Dorchevitz.
You got one more, wait?
Oh, sorry, come on up.
Did you know he was going to say that?
You can pay him later.
He said you knew what he was going to say.
Hi, my name is Eileen Coleman, I just had a question, which I, this is kind of like probably too late, but were there other bids on this property for healthcare, perhaps St. Joe's or any other institution that might have been interested in that?
Not that I'm aware of, and, and the township was not involved in any kind of a competitive bidding process. This was, uh, this was owned by, uh, Park Development, Saquon, and they were responsible for securing, um, the developer.
So this will be, uh, a land owned by Henry Ford Hospital then?
Eventually, yeah. If it, have, I don't know what the terms of the agreement are, but yes, most of it. Okay, Mr. Dorchevitz, you want to make your motion and then, uh, we'll second it?
Sure, I move to abstain from, um, any, uh, any, uh-
Vote.
Sorry. Any discussion or vote related to this issue?
Uh, and I think you have to state a reason.
Um, because I work, I moved, hang on, let me start. As supervisor, I move to abstain from any, uh, discussion or vote, uh, related to the Plymouth Marketplace PUD contract on the grounds that, um, I'm currently employed by a competitor and we're building a very similar facility about two miles away.
Okay, motions made by Mr. Dorchevitz, I will second that motion. Um, and I believe that under our rules, that that requires a unanimous roll call vote.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heightman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey? With bated breath.
The swing vote.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, hearing no other questions from either the board or the public, I will entertain a motion on the proposed, uh, resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heightman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-110, authorizing the supervisor and clerk to sign the first amendment of the Plymouth Marketplace PUD, PUD contract subject to final approval by the township attorney and the community plan.
Motions made by trustee Heightman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heightman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then Dorchevitz, does he?
No.
He has to say he abstains, right?
Abstain, yeah.
Did he say that?
Just trustee Dorchevitz.
Okay.
Abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor, I, I just think the record should be clear that the, uh, the resolution itself is different than what's included in the board packet.
Yes, we are voting on the, uh, the, the revised, uh, version that was provided to us this evening by the township attorney. And the clerk's office will so note that. Very good. Next item is item F5, this is the General Drive- Pardon me? General Drive SAD, uh, hearing of assessment. This also requires a public hearing, uh, and so I will need a role, I will need a motion to open a public hearing on the General Drive SAD. Mr. Heightman? Okay, motions made by trustee Heightman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by clerk Vorva, Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heightman? Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz? Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton, yes. Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing on item F5, the General Drive Hearing of Assessment at 8:16. Hearing of, I have hearing of assessment. Okay, is that what you're looking for? Turn it up? The volume, is that a Jerry project? Oh, well, I don't know. And they're on that one or us? Okay.
They're also going to have to get much closer to it, it's just not a sensitive mic.
Right. We've budgeted a new mic system for next year, now I'm coming in louder, so that's good, I guess. Um, so we are in a public hearing format right now on the hearing of assessment for, for General Drive. Now my mic is coming in a lot hotter now, just FYI.
It's probably too hot.
Think I just went off.
Yeah, it's gone.
Now I'm out.
Jerry unplugged you.
What do you have, Bob? Hold on, nothing yet.
Hello?
Oh, that's working, oop, I'm on. Test, 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 now I'm coming in real loud though. Test, 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 test. Okay, that's pretty good. I'm popping my peas a little bit, but that's okay.
Do clip.
That's radio. Okay, so, we're still in the public hearing of, uh, assessment for General Drive. George Sakoff, if you could come forward along with Patrick? If you could just, uh, tell us what this is all about and why we're, uh, what this procedure is with respect to the SAD on General Drive.
So, good evening, this is the, uh, the second, the last public hearing, uh, for this project. It's the public hearing of assessment for the General Drive Road Reconstruction Project. So tonight, after the public hearing, the board has requested to adopt the assessment role. And, uh, after the 30-day period after the public hearing, we'll come back to you at the first meeting in January with a contract award recommendation for the project. Tonight's objective is to, um, adopt the assessment role. The cost estimate, um, we've determined is a, is a accurate estimate at this point. We did solicit and receive bids, um, just last week. They're currently under review, so we feel comfortable with the project estimate that's cited in the role. So we can, uh, proceed with this step in the Special Assessment District.
Okay, so that means that our next board item, which is item six, is when we will actually adopt the, the assessment role itself.
Correct, yes.
And then should that be subject to final approval by the assessor?
Yes, it, it needs to, um, be subject to final approval of the assessor. We did discover there were, um, a couple of, uh-
Couple of minor errors?
Minor errors.
Okay.
That need to be corrected.
Nothing fatal, there were just more or less, uh-
Correct.
Clerical discrepancies.
That's how I would characterize it.
And our assessor should sign off on all of these things anyway, so, um, that's just par for the course. So do we, do you require anything else from the board at this point, other than our questions or, or what?
At this point, no, yeah, other than if you have any questions and then, um, then the motion after the public hearing.
So, uh, so George, you have gone out for bids and you've secured a bidder for this project?
Uh, we did bid the project, we received seven bids, um, and we're current, like Patrick said, we're currently evaluating the bidders for qualifications. Um, and then in January, we'll make a recommendation.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments by the public regarding the General Drive, um, Hearing of Assessment? So this is the SAD project for General Drive between Joy Road and Ann Arbor Road. It's a, it's a commercial area and, uh, this is, it's about a $1.7 million project. We received, uh, in 2018, we received a half a million dollars from the state of Michigan to help pay for this project. Um, we've been able to, not we really, but really the, the business owners themselves along General Drive have obtained the necessary signatures to, to advance this project. And, uh, we truly appreciate all of the hard work that they have put into it. So this is the next, uh, the next step in that process so that we can begin assessing the property owners for their, their share of the project. That being said, I know the clerk received a letter tonight from one of the, uh, business owners or a representative of a business owner. Could you just summarize that letter? He was here, but he, he left.
Uh, yeah, the, the property is for, um, from the General Court Commerce LLC. And, uh, he is a, uh, he's issued a letter here that's been hand-delivered today. Please be advised that I represent the owner of this particular parcel and they object to the inclusion of that parcel in the SAD. I've accepted that and I will be forwarding that acceptance back to them and, and also in our record.
So Bob, could you bring up 170 and, no, 168? And 169, let's see who this is on this list?
I think he represents a, a business in one of the courts.
Let's see which one it is.
General Court, do we have an address?
Is there an address in the letter or no? Does he have a parcel number?
They have a parcel ID.
Yeah, if he's an attorney, then he'll, he'll be precise, what is the parcel number?
So it'd be 05-
00. No, you're going, going the other way.
General Court LLC towards the bottom?
Yeah.
9165 General Court? Does that look like the address?
Yep. So he was not a signatory to the original petition?
That's correct.
So it didn't change the vote?
No, no. No, the vote's been taken and, and counted and he was, they, uh, his, his client objected from the beginning.
So which pro, which parcels are owned by Abso Pure or the Young family? If any? And did they, tell me, or let's, let's see if they bought into it?
I think they did. Couldn't have done it without them, if you could go back to the map.
Abso Pure, we met with them, George, uh, OHM met with them on a couple of times.
So all of those parcels, since I can't read this very well because the dark green doesn't show up well and printed, they have signed the petition as yes?
We couldn't have done it without them and we appreciate their support. In fact, uh, this project was, uh, it really goes back to the, the initial complaints, uh, filed by Abso Pure regarding the condition of the road. They certainly were not the only ones complaining, but, uh, they are clearly the largest user and, and they have been supportive.
Also, uh, for OHM and their representatives, uh, as a courtesy to us on these, uh, SADs, please always put a preliminary, market preliminary, timing plan in your communications so that we know. No project gets done on time without a written timing plan. So I'd like to see the timing plan every time.
Schedule?
Yeah.
Project schedule, yeah.
Microsoft project, whatever word you want to use, timeline, that kind of a thing?
Sure.
So that, and, so what is, the most important date is, when are you starting, when is your tentative date for starting mobilization?
Yeah, well, well, once we bring the contractor on board, we'll, we'll discuss a start date, but, I mean, the thought is that once the winter passes, the frost laws come off the roads, they could mobilize likely anytime after May 1st. And then once we issue a notice-
That late, they can't do April?
Uh, possibly, it depends on the weather and how late the winter goes. I mean, they, they have a certain calendar day window to complete the contract during the spring and summer months. So we left a little bit of leeway in that schedule because like, many times that gives us better pricing across the contractors to give them a little bit of a window to build the project. So, so I would, I would envision the project starting sometime after May 1st. Um, and probably ending, you know, before or around Labor Day.
And do you have, are you going to be closing the roads or will it be interfering with?
Well, we have to leave the, the road open during construction, so we set up a traffic control plan for one-way traffic through the, through the site.
Abso Pure had asked for that, they didn't want that road closed, and these guys did a great job putting that line together.
So you will be reversing-
We met with Abso Pure a couple of times and we, we talked to them about traffic control staging, how their trucks come into the site, out of the site.
Good.
So we tried to accommodate them.
Did a great job on that, thank you.
Kurt, do you know, we, of the $500,000 grant, we've collected half of it so far. Do you know what the key event is for us to allow to go back to the state to collect the other half?
That key event has, uh, occurred this week, uh, because the, we, we receive our funding in two, uh, tranches. The first one being the authorization to proceed by the, by the, the property owners. The second being the awarding, uh, or the selection of a, a qualified bidder. And so we've, we've-
The bidding.
We have, uh, or the bidding it out. So we have submitted that, I've been in contact with MDOT this week, uh, they have no problem with that. And so the, the check is in the mail for the second half.
We, they, they, um, require a certain document to be submitted for final payment. We, we assisted the township, uh, in submitting that actually this morning, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mark, this question is for you. How much money do you anticipate having to borrow to cover this project? And is the anticipated interest rate lower than the 4% that's in the contract?
Um, right now, we have about a half million dollars in the SAD fund. We'll collect by the end of this tax season another $250,000. So we'll have $750,000 in the SAD fund. This project is basically going to be double that. So, for round numbers, we need to borrow another $750,000. My recommendation would be that we borrow that internally from the Water and Sewer Fund.
And what is the going rate for the, what, you have to pay the legal rate or what?
We've been doing internally, um, at 2% borrowing and then we've been charging 4% for the cost of funds to the, uh, to the business owners, to the homeowners.
So say, so 2% is what the Water and Sewer Fund receives?
Correct.
And then we collect 4% and the other 2% goes to the general fund?
The other 2% of-
Two points?
Correct.
Can you do that?
No, I'm sorry, the, the SAD fund it goes to.
The SAD fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're willing, this, so you will borrow from the Water and Sewer?
So the SAD fund, you, you'll see in the budget, there's a principal and an interest line.
So we have several of these going on, so how much do you, from a cash standpoint, how much do you intend to borrow from the Water Fund in 2020?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know yet, it all comes down to which of these things are approved and how much they're going to cost.
Well, I think all of them will be approved this year, that we've, like, we have another one or two more, right?
Yeah, we still have, uh, Litchfield, I believe to be approved and, um-
Litchfield and General Drive are the ones that have gone the furthest right now. I mean, we, the others are still in the-
Yeah, you have Colony Farms.
Estimation phase.
And then that other Meadow something.
Plymouth Meadows.
Plymouth Meadows. So-
Andover Lakes, correct, yeah.
Got a lot of action, so.
Yeah.
You might have to go to a bank if you feel like the Water and Sewer Fund is not big enough.
Correct, yeah. I haven't, I haven't put the pencil to the paper yet to figure this out.
Kind of fun, you'll be able to do some financial activity.
Yeah, I don't do any of that.
Get some banks bidding?
What, what we did, the, a couple of years ago, we had three, we had three major SADs that took place in the subdivisions and I sent them a letter upfront and said, you've got two options. You can either pay me upfront or you can spread it out over 10 years at a 4% interest rate. We collected over 50% of that upfront from the homeowners. So I would give these new SADs the same option, pay upfront or, or pay over 10 years at a rate of interest. My suspicion is businesses are going to pay upfront as opposed to financing over 10 years. It's just a hunch. But we did get over 50% upfront payment from homeowners when we did this on SADs.
Yeah, these both are full reconstruction, so they are pricier projects.
Mm-hmm.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah.
And the 20 to 25% engineering cost is in line with what you would expect for a project like this? Over 20% of the cost is pure engineering?
For total, total engineering from planning stage through construction, it's typically 25%.
Okay, any other questions from the board or from the public? Because we're still in a public hearing mode. Alrighty, I need a motion then to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor.
Heitman.
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the, 8:32. Please take the roll.
Supervisor Heitz.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yep.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item F6. This is the adoption of the general drive, reconstruction, special assessment district, assessment roll. I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to adopt resolution 2019-12-10-111, authorizing the establishment of the general drive reconstruction SAD number next assigned and confirming the assessment roll as presented, subject to providing a 30-day period to permit any person having interest in the real property to file a written appeal of special assessment with the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
Subject to final approval by the township assessor?
Yes.
That's part of your motion?
Yes, subject to township assessor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Supervisor Heitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this. I think Heitman voted twice on that one.
I hope he did.
I, I have a, a question or policy thing that we've got. When a title company is doing a search on this, on these properties or any properties that have a pending SAD, what is the township's, one obligation and two, what is our policy for disclosing that a potential SAD or approved SAD is on this property? Because it isn't on the tax roll, where does that record show up and how do we handle it? This is for my own edification and delight.
So to delight you, we, we have an SAD module that you can query online and title companies query it online for any special assessments. For Litchfield and for general drive, I have loaded all of these parcels into the system already with a note that's saying under construction, basically. So it notifies the title company that something is happening.
And then is there an estimate of the amount?
No, no estimated amount. It just puts them on notice that this is a project in process.
Okay, so it is, people are not surprised very often.
Correct.
But it's incumbent upon the buyer to find that out.
Sure.
Caveat emptor is always in play.
So not, well, the title company ensures.
Well, they have to check. That's what they do. They, they call us and say, hey, is there anything going on here? Is there anything on, of record?
But you're saying they don't even have to call. They go on, they subscribe to the BSN8?
Title companies now, all of the title companies that work exclusively in Michigan always go to the BSA system. Ones that are outside the state will normally call us for, for verification. But majority of this, of this is all done online now.
Okay. So that takes care of that. We voted on that. We're all set. Item F7 is the 2019-24 collective bargaining agreement with firefighters' union. We've discussed this item in closed session a couple of months ago. There've been no significant changes since then. The agreement's been approved by the labor union, by their membership. And we do have the fire chief and labor attorney, John Clark, here tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Any questions or comments by the board? John, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You go first.
You go ahead, John.
All right. You just piqued my interest when you said no significant changes from our closed session. I want to know exactly what has changed, even if it's a article like a or the.
Nothing. No changes.
You sure? Because these words in here make it look like, based on the date, that something has changed.
No, this document is a red line draft of the tentative agreement that, that we prepared with the union. So now again, I mean, I guess a caveat to that is that the document that was received from the board, I think, I'm, I'm not sure if we presented a tentative or if we presented the red line.
I, I presented a red line to the board shortly, the week, the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay, so after the closed session?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so the document presented.
So what was online, in other words, it was sent, it's different than the closed session, it was sent by email?
Yeah.
The closed session was summary.
Yeah, the, the tentative agreement is a summary of, of the, of the changes proposed. That obviously has to be put in contract language. And it's going to be more involved and more detailed than something you would find in a tentative agreement. But the document that was sent to you by Thanksgiving is identical to the one being voted on tonight. I can assure you of that.
What, what was the date of the closed session again?
October something, right?
October something? Probably the first Tuesday in October. Okay. Anybody else?
I have a, a number of comments and concerns that I, I would just like to walk through because I, I think the taxpayers should be informed.
I'm not sure your mic is on.
Testing? So, can you hear me? So I, I have a, a number of concerns that I'd like to at least air. So I'll use the example of a firefighter who has 10 years seniority. What the contract says is that, well, that, that individual would receive 15 day, 15 12-hour days of sick leave, which is 180 hours. 13 holidays of 12-hour days, which is 156. 10 days of vacation, and mind you, these are not eight-hour days, but they're 24-hour days. So that's 240 hours and 48 hours of personal time for a total of 624 hours of paid time off. And if you equated that into eight-hour days, that would equate to the equivalent of 78 days of paid time off. So that, that individual would receive, when the contract is, in 2023, when it's fully, when the raises fully kick in, they would receive, I think, 83,594. This is without overtime. And then 1,500 and a half's made pay if, if they were qualified for that. $900 in food allowance, $3,500 in paramedic pay, for a total of around $91,000. So those 78 days, equivalent days, or 624 paid time off hours a year would be about $19,000 in compensation for the average person is paid for time and, they're paid that for time in which they're not on the job. The number of shifts, if I did this right, is averages, it's 121 shifts per year that an individual would be required to work. And if you subtracted, backed out the paid time off, that's 26 shifts, which leaves about 95 shifts per year that somebody could work if they took full use of all their holidays, sick leaves, vacation time and so on. I think it's very lucrative. The rank and file raise over that five-year period of time, the compounded number is 13%, which is slightly ahead, it's ahead of the call, of the cost of living. But the command officers is 22% compounded over the, over the life of that contract. So in 2023, they would, they would be paid 22% more. I don't know, I'm sure you guys have done the math to determine what impact that would have on, on budget. But I, I also had a concern in there about promotions. And promotions don't go to the best qualified. They go to the person with the most seniority who, who applies for the job. And that's been problematic for us before because we've ended up with individuals that had promotions and, and which we had problems with, to be honest. I, I wish we wouldn't do that. I wish we would give promotions based on best qualified for the position and the individual who's going to best reflect the character of this community, not the one who's happened to be in the seat the longest. From a staffing standpoint, I, I think it's important to understand that this total compensation is, is higher than the base indicates. There's also, I think the term is step-up pay, in which the senior fighter, fighter on duty gets the pay if, if the, if the command officer's out, that person gets the pay for that person for the day. So that's, that's even, even, even more to that. And I think finally, the, I think the, what did it say about the fire inspector? Five years? I think anybody with five years can apply for that and get, you know, receive what is the highest paid position outside, outside the chief. One other question, I did have one question. On page 32 on the residency requirement, they're required to be within 35 air miles. Who validates that?
I validate that and everybody is. The, the farthest person away right now to the borders of the township is 34 air miles.
What is Howell, Michigan? How many air miles is Howell? Or the township around Howell?
Howell is not the farthest away. And I, I can't tell you how many air miles Howell is right here off the top of my head.
But it qualifies. It's within the reg, the range.
It does. And to be honest with you, Rochester Hills, the southern part of Rochester Hills qualifies in, as far as air miles. Oakland Township where I grew up does not qualify. That's north of Rochester Hills. So that gives you an idea of, of the circle that this encompasses.
So what, how many of your employees reside in Plymouth Township?
Two today that I know of.
And just for the record, as we know, residency requirements were abolished by the Michigan Legislature in 2012.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, I, I've asked for it before and I know there's been a lot of pushback on, you know, on, on publicizing the total compensation, which would include not only the base pay, but the, you know, the benefits and so on. And I know there's a lot of, a lot of pushback on there.
You mean a column for each of the pay?
Yeah.
And their, their job classification?
Yeah.
Like lieutenant one?
We, I thought we did provide you with something at the closed session.
If it went to me, I missed it.
But not, it's not public.
Currently not. It was provided to you, it was provided to you in the closed session as part of our negotiation process.
Yeah, and I, I understand that, but it's not, it's not public. But I, I just think it's.
Somebody can FOIA it.
We keep creeping up. I mean, we added another.
We could deny it, yeah.
Another holiday, more vacation. And again, 624 hours.
Paid time off?
Is, is what somebody's argued before.
But he keeps telling us that we can't find employees that want to do that to get that much time off.
I may be old, but I'll take the job.
Okay, so, so let's have the chief, I mean, I don't want to debate it because I, I don't think we even touched time off in the contract this time around. So all of that time off stuff was agreed to in the past by past board. So Chief, do you want to comment?
You added another holiday.
Yeah, Good Friday is, is a full day holiday for all employees of the township now. So we're, we're being consistent with all of the other employees.
So 13, 13 paid holidays.
Okay. Chief, do you want to comment on the other thing?
Yeah, I just, can you tell me how you got your numbers again? Because just real quick, I looked and I was 200 hours less than you. Because you said a 10-year firefighter. Yeah, so I, my numbers are just in the 400s, not 600s.
So it's 648 versus 448 approximately?
468.
So, so 10 years of service is 10 days of vacation time, which is 240 hours. Because they're 24-hour days. Holidays are 12 hours of pay and there's 13 of them.
They work every holiday. They do not get any holiday off. If they're scheduled to work, they are there. They don't, that's not time off.
But they get paid.
They get paid. If they work, they get paid holiday pay. Do they not?
They get holiday pay regardless, whether they work or not.
Exactly.
And everybody works a certain number of holidays, but that's not time off and.
Not time off. Well, it's extra pay. It's extra pay, okay.
So, so it's money. All right, so it's money. All right.
It's equivalent, all right.
But you added that as time off. It's just the way I understood it. So I thought they had like 180 hours more than they really had.
That would also apply to police or DPW or dispatchers who also work holidays.
Well, it's, you know, I, I, I think it's very, it's very lucrative. I, I think the taxpayers voted for a millage because we made the case that we needed to hire additional firefighters and we made the case that we needed to fund the pension liability. But I don't think we really made the case that we were going to provide 22% compounded raises to the, to the command officers. And that's my opinion. I know you're not going to agree with it.
No, fair enough.
Chief, could you explain the step-up pay? Let's say you have, you got three stations. And you, you'll have a captain or a lieutenant at each place?
Yeah, we'll have a captain at, in charge of the entire department and a lieutenant in charge of the two outstations. So one captain, two lieutenants. Back in, I believe it was 1994, the, the chief would pick who was in charge of each station. And the union negotiated that that would be a position as opposed to just selected by the fire chief at the time. And that's when acting officer pay came in to be, to the, no, actually, the pay was before 1994. But that's when ranks were established, as far as the lieutenant rank. And I believe it was 1994. But yeah, the senior firefighter, if there is not an officer, is designated to hold the responsibility of getting that job done. And if things go wrong, to face the blame.
So, so if a ca, so if a captain, if this captain is, he's sick or he gets ill, he gets hurt. So someone, one of the lieutenants then that are.
A lieutenant would fill in the captain's position.
Senior lieutenant would become the paid captain.
Yes, the senior lieutenant on duty. And we would only pay the difference in pay between a lieutenant and a captain.
Right. Let me maybe illustrate it another way, just to make sure I understand it. Is that there's always, at every fire station at all times, there's going to, there might be as little as two people, but one of them is always going to receive captain's pen.
That is incorrect.
That is not correct. Isn't that what you just said?
No, we have lieutenants. We have one captain for the entire township on duty each day.
Okay, so a firefighter, so. Okay, so a firefighter, so, but somebody's always going to receive, if there's not a lieutenant on duty, then that other individual who's more senior in rank is going to receive step-up pay. Is that accurate?
Correct, at the outstation.
So at any given time, there's always going to be three people in the township receiving at least lieutenant pen?
Yes.
Three stations, three lieutenants.
At any given time.
Well, two lieutenants and a captain.
Pardon?
Two lieutenants and a captain. We don't pay a lieutenant to work under a captain. They work outside.
Well, in fairness, they're providing those services. I mean, they're providing a higher level of service. They should be compensated to provide that higher level of service.
You've got two workers, one boss.
It's two to one. It's a little rich, but compared with private sector, but.
A broader question, I guess, would be, Dan, because that situation would come up in an overtime situation, right? You don't staff that, so it's a situation where you may have one or more commanding officers out, whether they're sick or vacation or whatever the case may be. So is it more of a general question? Can you describe the overtime policy and what your expectations are for the upcoming year in terms of what our overtime is going to be?
Yes, I can. Under the old contract, overtime was done by whoever, whatever employee had the lowest number of hours. And those hours accumulated overtime. Whoever had the lowest number of hours was offered the overtime first. Well, we became at a stage where we had people with zero hours of overtime and people with 5,000 hours of overtime over the course of a 20-year career. So the employees with zero overtime could literally take every bit of overtime and not give it to anybody else. So it was making the rich richer and the poor poorer. The union and the township both came together on this and agreed that that was a poor system. And it's been the system since before I came here. But we changed that system so that when an employee works overtime, they immediately go to the bottom of the list. So then the next employee just goes up. It doesn't, it's not ranked by hours. It's just every employee is on a list from 1 to 24. When number one takes the overtime, he moves to the bottom of the list.
So you've got two lists, firefighters and command officers?
Correct.
Okay. So if you've got a situation where a lieutenant is in a fire station, and they're saying, I'm going to take the day off, another one would come in, another lieutenant would come in?
Only if we, not necessarily. We would not call in another person overtime if we had enough staff to maintain that. Only if we had less than six people would we call in overtime. We normally schedule eight a day. So we can allow one guy off on vacation, one guy off sick, and still not call in anybody on overtime.
Do you try to replace like-for-like if you're short a lieutenant? Do you try to bring in a lieutenant?
We do, because we're paying for a lieutenant, we might as well bring in a lieutenant.
Okay.
And again, this lieutenant could be called to a structure fire in Canton Township or Northville Township and be in command right from the beginning. So, or even in our township. So we need somebody who's in command, who's well-trained, who has the abilities to handle that incident.
Okay. So you're fully staffed as eight on a shift. If you get to seven, you're okay. If you get to six, you're okay. If you get to five, you bring in somebody for overtime.
That is correct.
And if you're doing the transport, you're not calling somebody to backfill?
We do not, no.
Okay.
I will do, I will give you one caveat. If we have everybody out, and it's a snowy day, and everybody's out, all three stations are out, we will do what's called an all-call. We'll say, hey, anybody available, come in because we are extremely busy and we want to be prepared for the next run. But that happens three times a year, four times a year tops. It happens very infrequently.
Do you have just an estimate of what, how often this step-up pay situation happens?
Yeah, it would happen every time an officer's on vacation, personal time or sick time.
10% of the days, 20% of the days, just a guesstimate?
Guesstimate, I would say probably 25% of the time. That'd be a guesstimate.
Okay, any other questions from the board, the public?
I would like to hear the answer to Bob's question about promotions being based upon longevity versus performance.
Okay, I'd be happy to answer that.
Let me comment on that first. First of all, the voters of Plymouth Township back in the 1960s, 70s, created a civil service commission that is limited only to the fire department. This goes back to the day when we had the Wayne County Sheriff handling police, and the firefighters were non-union. And so this was a way to provide them with a certain degree of protection under the law. The contract that's before you tonight will bring the, will modernize the hiring process to put the firing, hiring of firefighters on par with the way we hire police and dispatch and any other employee in the city. That will be removed from the responsibility of the civil service commission. We do not have any changes to the promotion process, which is still governed by, and I'm looking to you guys to correct me now on this one, that is handled by the civil service commission, but I also think that the contract governs it to some degree as well. Now I'm going to leave it up to you.
The previous contract, the union negotiated for seniority, not this contract, the previous one under the, an older board, negotiated promotions to the lieutenant, from firefighter to lieutenant, as seniority-based. We didn't touch that in this contract. But what we did do is say, well, from lieutenant to captain, we will continue that trend.
But I do think it's a bit, I don't want to say the word disingenuous, that's a little strong, but to, you know, to use the excuse that past contracts included that, and that, you know, they were negotiated in past contracts, and at the same time criticized the past contracts, the past boards that had negotiated those contracts. I know what I'm thinking, it's just been a long day.
No, and that's, Bob, no, and I hear where you're coming from. And I'm not trying to, I'm not belittling anybody. It's the reality of the fact is that the fire union is, or firefighters in Plymouth Township are treated differently because of, they have a civil service commission that was voted in by the public many, many years ago, that it's still in place. Under PARA, the Michigan Public Employee Relations Act, we do have the right to amend that, those provisions under a collective bargaining agreement, which we've done here. We have not done at all. We have not abolished the civil service commission. And you're absolutely right, Bob. The promotion process has not changed from the 1970s unless there's something I'm missing, Chief. And I'm not, I guess I'm not missing anything.
I know, and I think we should have used this opportunity to negotiate it because it has caused us lots of problems over the years.
Well, Chief, as I.
And you know the one we're dealing with right now.
Guys, as I recall, I think we did tweak some element of the promotion process in this contract, didn't we?
We did. We followed the, from firefighter to lieutenant was governed by seniority-based promotion, as Trustee Dorchavitz said. And we just carried that over from lieutenant to captain.
Right. But there's testing involved as well. I mean, it's not solely seniority-based. Okay, I'm wrong.
Okay. But there's, clarify, there's no testing for firefighter to lieutenant? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
It hasn't been for decades.
Yeah, it's just time and place, seniority, which is typically what unions do.
No, but, you know, of course it can be a total pain in the ass, it's nothing but a problem, and they get promoted because they've been sitting there for the longest, and that's created problems for us. You know it, and I know it.
And again, amending the civil service commission, which was approved by the voters, that's the voter's intent, is a process. I don't think it would have been very unrealistic for us to essentially abolish the role of the civil service commission in one fell swoop in one contract.
I think it takes a, doesn't it take a vote to repeal Act 78?
It does.
Vote of the citizens.
It does, but you can carve out through collective bargaining, which we did here. You can collect, you can carve out the duties and responsibilities of the civil service commission and put them back under the contract. And that's what we did. So for example, as the supervisor said, now, the new hire process is under the tutelage and control of the administration. So you have people, with the supervisor involved, the chief, other experts will be involved in that process as opposed to leaving it to the civil service commission, who may or may not have the expertise to evaluate firefighters as candidates coming into the township. So that was a positive thing that we got out of this contract. It allows a township more flexibility, because hiring people is hard enough today in the firefighting service and the police service. It's hard enough. And to make it harder through the civil service process doesn't do anybody in this township any good. And so to bring that under the supervision of the supervisor and the administration is a positive.
So the union, this is just kind of an interesting discussion to me more than any. The union wants promotions based upon seniority?
Yes, that was their proposal.
That's interesting. I would just think they would want the best candidate to be in that position.
Listen, even though they are promoted by seniority, doesn't mean that they're separate, I mean, they still have, they still have to follow the chain of command, they still have to abide by the rules, by the general orders, by the SOPs of the department. So ultimately, they still have responsibilities to not only follow those above them, but to make sure that those under them are being properly supervised. There is one other caveat. We also included in that that they had to pass fire officer one, two, and three, they had to take the class, and pass it prior to promotion. So if a promotion come up and they haven't achieved those goals on their own, then they're passed over.
Ah, so that's what I was referring to, seriously. I mean, I referred to it as testing, and that's basically what it is, so.
They're passed over, or they have the opportunity to take the class?
They are passed over. They have to have, per the language in the contract, they have to have it at the time of the posting of the job.
In the past, they could be promoted and then were given some period of time to go back and obtain those certifications required under the contract.
So it was contingent? We were flexible in the past?
Yes.
All right, I wanted to clarify that.
Right.
And that's in the new contract?
Correct.
All right, but one last question on that, just a clarification point. But in the, in the new contract, I'm trying to find the spot, I apologize for that. So, so a promotion from, repeat that again if you would, please, Dan. So promotion from firefighter to lieutenant is seniority-based. Lieutenant to captain now is also seniority-based.
Yes, but it'll be battalion chief under this contract. It's seniority-based. But to even be promoted to lieutenant, they have to have achieved fire officer one, two, and three.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
Okay.
But it's your leadership team, and you don't have the right to select who your leaders are going to be. And I think that's just really backwards.
I was not in the negotiations when this was changed.
But this is fire and police process norm.
No, not for police.
Well, no, but typically, seniority.
Not in police.
Well, seniority plays a big role in a lot of union things, typically. I mean, that's.
Not in Plymouth Township.
Zero, it plays zero in police?
They have to have a certain number of years to be able to.
Right, so it, seniority is always a factor.
It's always a factor.
But not the only factor.
We do it differently in fire, and it's just the way the voters intended it in the 1970s, so.
We're going to have to do a millage for police and fire coming up.
No, we have.
I hope not.
No, no, guys, hold on. We have a, we have a millage renewal.
That's what I'm saying.
Next year.
Next year.
It's a renewal. It's not a tax increase.
I didn't.
We thought you were going to say tax increase.
We have to have a vote.
We have to have a vote, yeah. But I think, I think, given all of the drama that will be on the 2020 ballot, if you're proposing that we rescind or repeal Act 78, I think that will be a very weird message to send to the voters.
I was thinking about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Stop thinking about it.
The timing's bad.
Stop that.
And I think PARA gives us the flexibility that we need to make further changes in the future.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions by the board, by the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hold you to three minutes.
Thank you. You probably know my name already. But I was actually just wondering why this bargaining, why the bargaining agreement wasn't online, so digitalized. So you had a hard copy available that the public could come in and read?
It did.
A hard copy. But most people work, so it's not available for the public domain. And if you want a truly transparent government at this level, you need that available to the public so that after they work, they can come home and read these documents to be fully informed. And I agree with Mr. Dorchavitz and all his comments, so.
The contract will be online. Once it's, in the past, we put them online. Are we still doing that?
Still do, yeah.
All right.
But before it gets, you're going to go through and vote for it?
Historically, we just put the signature page on there, which demonstrates that the union has approved the contract prior to our approval. We've already reviewed the contract online and in closed session, which we have the right to do under the Open Meetings Act.
Okay. I just think it would be in this age, you know, in this digital age, you can put these contracts online for public domain. And I think it would behoove you to do that, actually.
We absolutely will once it's approved, because it's that, then it's finalized.
I think it should be prior to approval.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-112, authorizing the Board of Trustees to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Charter Township of Plymouth Professional Firefighters Association, IAAF Local 1496, for a term beginning April 1st, 2019, and ending March 31st, 2024, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign same.
Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Forva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchavitz?
No.
And Supervisor Heitman?
Yes.
Before we leave this, since the Finance Director is here, how are we handling and what's the timing of the back pay?
We are working on that right now with our payroll coordinator and HR. I've given them, I told them not to do anything, obviously, until this was approved by the board. We will do our best to provide the back pay and benefits pursuant to the contract to the best of our ability. These are complex.
But it's got to be paid in this calendar year.
Not necessarily.
And you're still designating on the W2 as income in 2019? Even if it's received in 2020?
Yes.
Are you absolutely sure?
Yes, I am. And it happens all, I mean, I've had contracts that have been two and three years expired. Contracts in Detroit go to 312, and they could be three years behind. By the time they get the award, the award would include back pay for several years.
But what it does is it creates an anomaly for the income tax calculation of the employees. We need to do, you're going to have to file amended returns then.
We're.
It's chaos.
Yeah, okay, they know that.
Yeah.
Well, let's do what we can to get her done. You know, this is like, you know, it's, we still have a lot of time. This is not a sleepy holiday.
We are. We're working on it. We're ready, we're cocked and ready to go. The chief has already met with payroll and HR, and we're ready to rock and roll after tonight.
Payroll and an email saying.
So do we have 100% commitment that we will pay it before the end of this calendar year?
We will pay a large portion of it, but we're not saying we're going to be 100% accurate, you know, with all of the numbers. We're, I shouldn't say that.
Well, you got to be 100% accurate.
I think he's right, though, because you have to declare the income in the year in which it was earned.
This has happened even in Plymouth Township before. It's gone multiple years.
I know. Yeah, we don't want, we're trying to avoid that, because all it does is create extra expense and work for the employees. Because you have to pay an accountant usually to do an amended return if you're not doing it yourself.
See that money in 2020, that is money.
You're shaking your head.
We're doing it to the best of our ability, and we suspect that we will achieve it. So.
All right, we'll do our best.
We're on it, we're on it. Okay.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Do we want to take a break or keep on going?
Thank you, and I would like to wish the whole board, because I won't see you, a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You, too.
Do we want to take a break? All right, let's reconvene in 10 minutes, okay? Okay, we're back on the record at 9:20. Item F8 is fourth quarter budget amendments. Mark and Ginger.
Good evening, Board. So before you, as a budget amendment for fiscal year 2019, this is fourth quarter adjustment. The general fund budget request before you is $46,900. This is $8,500 for emergency preparedness as it relates to expenses for an unanticipated generator repair. This includes $8,400 for communications as it relates to a Viper communication system for the dispatch, and a request of $30,000 for the fire department back pay.
$30,000?
$30,000.
Okay, that's good.
So that would be a budget amendment of $46,900 to general fund. The number would be $46,900. We're going to amend your packet to include the back pay for the fire department in the amount of $30,000.
So...
If this page is no longer, $6,500 is no longer...
No.
We're going to add $30,000.
Because we're going to try to pay the firefighters everything that they're owed before the end of the calendar year, and so Ginger just wants to make sure that that is reflected as a budget amendment in the 2019 budget, which is fair. Yes, sir.
And the other item before you is for the Drug Law IRS Fund, Fund 267, in the amount of $1,840.
What is the $20,500 for the generator, what was done?
There was an emergency repair done in October. There was budget originally set aside for generator repairs.
No, I want to know the technical stuff. You probably don't know it. Do you have the invoice, or which building was it? Was it this building?
Oh, I don't know. Generator that runs the police side and this building, I believe.
And what did they do to it? For 25,000 is a lot, sir.
I don't, I'm not prepared to discuss the detail. I don't know exactly what, but it was, it was a critical, it's a critical element to our operation.
Right.
They came out and assessed it, and it was cheaper to repair than purchase a new one. The new one was, I think, a couple hundred thousand if we were to do that.
Right.
So I can get back to you and let you know what details.
Yeah, those things typically last 30 years. I mean, they're not used very often.
Well, they're actually turned on every week for at least an hour on Tuesday at 11:30.
For a test, yeah.
And then they're used, we use it, we use it frequently when we have power outages and whatnot, but we've had, historically, in the last three years, we've had problems with that generator. We've talked about those in the past.
It was, I don't remember the details, but it was early in the year. It was in the March-April timeframe, and the problem was when we got a power outage in the township hall, it wasn't, it wasn't kicking over correctly. What's supposed to happen is the power goes out, the battery, the battery in the data center room is supposed to kick in and keep all the systems up and running for a period of X number of minutes, and then the generator kicks on for a back supply. The handoff between those things was not working correctly. And we brought the battery supplier in here, and we brought the generator people in here, and they were working, working, working. They were here for two weeks.
Yeah.
And finally got it fixed, so the handoff is now working correctly. The fix was not 25,000. The fix was 8,500.
The 25,000 represents the department's budget in its entirety.
Correct, right. So we had to increase the budget by 8,500 to cover the cost of that repair.
So there's a relay switch or something?
This was electrical, it wasn't a mechanical thing. I don't, I don't know what the fix was, and they had, they had literally three different parties talking about this and coming up with a resolution.
That was in March. I was out of town.
Yeah, it was back, yeah, that's right. Yeah, you were gone.
Those Mark Lewis and Bob Jenks were working on this.
And to some extent, I think John Brothers. All right. Okay, what else do you have for us, Ginger?
That's it.
That's it? All right, any questions by the board?
Ginger, the, I don't know if we're to there yet, all of the Viper upgrades that were done?
Yes.
Is that next, or is that part of this?
So the Viper budget that was set forth in the fiscal year 19 by the board was $252,800, which was demonstrated in the attachment to show what was budgeted. The actual cost to install the communication system was $261,421.75. So the actual purchase went $8,600 over budget. However, when they purchased the furniture equipment, the actual expense came in slightly under budget, so therefore the difference is $8,400 that's being requested to ensure that the department has sufficient funds to pay all of their bills in fiscal year 19.
So how will you handle this when you do the true-up reconciliation for the 911 with the city of Plymouth next year? Will any of this affect that calculation? Maybe nobody knows, but somebody needs to find out.
I believe the total cost of the operation is part of that true-up at the end of the year, and once we get to fiscal year end and we've received all of the invoices, which will probably not get till the end of January, we'll be able to then start our reconciliation process of true cost for the dispatch.
So the city of Plymouth is aware of these things, and, or not really? Because their expense will go up because of this, is that right? For 2018, or 20, excuse me, 2019?
It's the collective cost of the whole operation. So it's not the agreement.
But this is a cost, this is a one-time expense. And so the city of Plymouth, which shares the cost with a contract with us for 911, this may be a surprise to them. It was a one, it was, the answer is, I don't know exactly how that calculation works, but it was a one-time expense, the vast majority of which was covered by a grant. Right, a portion of, okay, but they're still going to have some extra. All right, it's just...
It'll come up in our discussions with the city next year when we do the recalculation.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Nothing? Then I don't see any public here that's interested in this issue, so I need a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-113, authorizing the amendments to the 2019 general fund budget in the amount of $46,900, and the 2019 special revenue funds budget in the amount of $1,840.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, item 9 is, thank you, Ginger. Item 9 is the annual designation of depositories. Treasurer Clinton.
Just, as it says, annually seeking approval to continue to work with the three banks, depositories that I've been working with for the last several years, Bank of Ann Arbor, Flagstar, and Comerica. I've attached to this resolution the bank ratings. They're all extremely strong banks and feel very comfortable we can continue to do business with them.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, so what are you doing to manage the $250,000 FDIC cap? Maybe nothing, but maybe you can't do anything, but I just wanted to understand it. So if one of these banks, we have more than $250,000 in each account. Correct. And so essentially, that money is uninsured. Above $250,000. Above and beyond $250,000. We've got $15 million spread across these banks, so... So in the past, some treasurers have insured that somehow. I don't, I didn't know the creative method, but is that something we need to talk about or think about?
I don't think any of us understood the creative method.
No, 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 it was, no, it was not our treasurer that did it, but other treasurers in other communities, there was a way, especially during the financial crisis, there was some changes made that allowed municipalities to protect their money. But I am going, but this is a long time ago, and we're not in a financial crisis right now, but, so you're saying having uninsured money is not a big concern? It's a, it's a concern if you're doing business with unreputable banks. That's why I attach these bank rankings, which show the financial assets of these banks are extremely strong. They're rated by the bank ranking system A minus. That's why we make these decisions every year. Do we want to continue to do business with these banks or not? Because there is risk associated with whoever you're putting your money with. I don't have any secret sauce in how you get around the FDIC cap, but I'm recommending that we continue to do business with these because they're extremely strong, financially stable banks.
Essentially, also, if I'm remembering correctly, when there've been issues with certain banks here in the township, there's a process that's used for someone, I don't know if it's the Federal Reserve, or there's a state agency to ask another bank to come in and take that bank over, essentially.
And take over those assets, correct.
So has this, the insurance really kicked in, to your knowledge, recently? I think it's more reassuring the average deposit.
Well, I know in the two situations, the two banks in the Plymouth community that closed back in the mid-2000s, that's exactly what happened, is other banks came in and took over the assets. Yeah, but it's supervised by the FDIC. And the bank.
They supervise that.
Fine. Main Street Bank in Plymouth went through that recently, and one of these banks here...
Liberty.
Liberty, which is in the building that now is occupied by Ann Arbor Bank.
Ann Arbor Bank bought them out.
They went through that, where it was a government coordinated, they closed the doors, they do it on a weekend usually, and then they put a different sign out on Monday morning at 9 o'clock, says this is the new bank. But, you know...
I think Mr. Potter did the same thing.
Yeah, he did. The former state treasurer did the same thing. I don't remember who that guy's name is.
And Mark, you know, in an effort to continue to put business back into Plymouth Township businesses, have we looked at First Merchant as, you know, our new bank over here?
I have not looked at them, no.
Interesting to see what kind of rating they have as well.
Yeah.
I'd love to give them some business.
Okay, any other questions? Then I will move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-114, authorizing the proposed depositories for the Charter Township of Plymouth for calendar year 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes.
Okay, item F10 is the 2020 Board of Trustees' meeting schedule.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
We've put this together, and we'd like to adopt this tonight, which is required under the Open Meetings Act, and then we'll, we'll post it out in front, we'll post it online and everywhere else.
And as you know, you know, from time to time, we may have to either add a meeting or cancel a meeting sometimes, but not, but this is the schedule for the year.
Now, this is really designed so that we don't have to add a meeting.
Exactly.
If we did, it would have to be a rather extraordinary situation.
Correct.
It's much easier to cancel meetings than to add ones.
Correct.
So I know that some of, I mean, I know I have some conflicts already with some of these dates, and we, but we do want to preserve the study session schedule, which would still be the first Tuesday. Very unlikely that we're going to use all of them in 2020.
So you don't want to make the changes that I recommended in the email, Jerry? Yeah, I saw, I saw your changes, and I... Like April 7th is the week that the public schools is shut down?
Is that April 7th or the week before?
No, it's that week.
That's spring break.
That's the spring break.
Well, Bob, you're the only one left with kids in the public school, so I don't know. If you're going to be on vacation, you know, let us know.
I'm the young guy here.
No, you're not, but...
By one year, I think, maybe.
Yeah. Young guy, oh my...
So anyway, that's, that's just a...
July 7th is, you know, very close to the 4th of July.
Probably, I probably wouldn't anticipate a meeting that day, but again, if we were, if there's something unusual happened, we would have to meet, we could, we'd be able to do that.
When do the employees get Veterans Day off this year? Is it the actual 11th, or is it the Monday before?
Whatever the 11th is.
I think it's Wednesday, I think. Okay, so as a courtesy to employees, November 10th, I wouldn't have a meeting on that day, so that people can go home at a reasonable...
No, we're off on the 11th.
You're off on the 11th.
Veterans Day is on what day?
On the 11th.
Yeah, no, but what day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, has to be Wednesday.
Okay.
So, you know, those kinds of things, and then Thanksgiving week, the 24th? I say simplify it now.
I mean, we only met once in November this year, and we, I canceled the meeting, I canceled the meeting in November, we canceled the meeting this year in October as well.
We're meeting on my birthday, for God's sake, let's take that October.
I mean, I'll probably be, I'm going to miss at least one of those dates myself, I can tell you right now, so.
So essentially, you're asking us to approve this to make it easier to cancel...
Correct.
...some of these than it is to adopt a customized schedule?
This is the worst case.
And then have to add them in.
Yeah, absolutely. Because then we have to do special meetings, we have to post them, we have to go through all that hassle.
But...
And the Open Meetings Act requires that we have to lay out our schedule at the beginning of the year. Mr. Lawyer's nodding his head, yes.
That's correct.
Okay, then, can I have a motion on this?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-115, authorizing the formal scheduling and publication of the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees' meeting and study session schedule for the calendar year 2020.
Okay, motions made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
No.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Supervisor Heizie?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton? Yes, but I always take Gary Heitman's birthday off.
Good.
There you go, see? Thank you.
He's banging.
Is that a national holiday? Okay, item F11 is reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've consolidated these three appointments into one resolution that I would hope that you would support. Michael Carlin, Donald Schnetler, and Steve Basset have all agreed to serve for another term of three years, expiring December 31st of 2022. I've met, I've conferred with all three of them, and they would, they would like to serve again, and they've been very faithful.
Gary, you're good, you're good, they're, you're good with these choices?
Yeah, yeah, they're, all three, very, very good guys.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2019-12-10-116, authorizing the reappointment authorizing the reapportment of Mr. Michael Carlin and Donald Schnettler and-
Steve Basset.
Steve Basset as, oh, hold on. The first two are to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring December 31, and Steve Basset as an alternate
Yes.
to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2022.
Yes. But it's all contained in the resolution.
It is? Okay.
Yep. Okay. Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dempsey. Is there, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yep.
Supervisor Heitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Item G is Supervisor and Trustee Comments. I made the comment today at our staff meeting that tonight is the last meeting of the second decade of the 21st century. Isn't that wild? Think about it. So anyway, on that, as you ponder, as you ponder that thought and as we enter the roaring twenties, I-
Legal marijuana, I knew it was coming.
I would wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, if anybody is still watching us at this late hour. We will be meeting in January. We'll be meeting January 7th for a study session. That'll be our annual goal-setting meeting, and we've got a couple other items from the Fire Chief that night. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dorchevitz. You're good. Gary Heitman.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Jerry Vorva.
Merry Christmas to everyone in the township.
Mr. Clinton.
All set. Thank you.
Jack?
I'll echo the season's greetings to the citizens of the township.
All right. Hate to be the Grinch, but season's greetings, but I have some questions. Board of Review, are we up and ready? The people are appointed, and are, we need to make sure they have some training to make sure they're updated, Board of Review?
Yeah, they're all, it's the same people that we've been using for the last couple of years, and they-
You don't think they need any training and no?
They've had, some of them, the new guys have had.
Refresher, all right.
Yeah, I know. I think they know what's up.
The land contract that we sold that surplus land to at the DPW, those dates have all passed. Have they executed the contract as written? In other words, have they given us the money?
No, because they do not know exactly the land that is developable at this time. I, my hunch is that half of the, the lower half of the property towards the railroad tracks will not be developable because of wetland issues and drainage concerns. They may be able to develop the area to the, to the west of the DPW building. Really, it's, the developer is talking to our engineers, and I don't know what the, what the resolution of that is going to be. I suspect that what they will have to do is come back to the Board and will have to amend the contract or, or review it in some way.
So that contract is void?
I'm not gonna say-
The dates were missed.
I'm not gonna say it's void, but I think we would have to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Kevin on that one. Void is kind of a-
Void.
That's tough.
Well, it's timed out, is what it is.
Void is a term you could use. I would, I would prefer that it, it never came into existence.
There you go. All right, so then it can be put up to sale to another buyer. That's the way real estate works.
Eh, it's possible, but I mean, the developer is still acting in good faith, so we would-
The land is potentially appreciated in the last 18 months. Possibly. I don't know. But we need to look at that before we carry on the contract without a-
And before it goes south, yeah.
I mean, we had it appraised in 2017, and it's, we, we secured a very good price for it from the developer.
So just, so I understand, the contract is no longer, in layman's terms, valid? We have no obligation to sell it to this developer because they didn't meet their condition?
It would depend on whether or not the purchase agreement was signed. I believe there were some contingencies in the purchase agreement that had deadlines. The land contract itself was never signed. So the land contract was never signed, so it, it never came into existence. If the purchase agreement had a expiration period in it, and that period has passed, then either party could just opt out of the contract or not enforce the contract.
Really, they do have to come back to make a presentation for something to replace what was, was negotiated? Is what you're saying?
That's one way you could look at it. I mean, if the parties wanted to continue with the same terms, they could just execute an addendum to the purchase agreement if-
But that would have to come to the Board, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So that's, wanna make sure that, okay. The, the last item is this, remember I handed out this great explanation, a proposal, eh?
Yes.
If we can put it on the website and maybe send it out with our, what do you call the notices that go out in March for the Board of Review? What do you call that document? Okay, well, anyway, this might help people understand, especially real estate people who notoriously don't convey the effect of Proposition A, and then the treasurer gets all kinds of bizarre questions, like why did it, why did this tax go way up? This is an excellent document done by Oakland County, so I urge you to-
Why don't we just have copies in the rack out here?
Well, because a lot of it's outdated already, so we, we need to-
But I mean, we gotta update.
Tracy Haley, Tracy Haley, and I know Chuck, you've talked with her, too. I've, I've met with her. Tracy Haley and the, and the guys from WCA were gonna, were, are looking at that document, and they were gonna make some changes. I can follow up and see where they are with it.
Yeah.
It's a document that they could use with all of their clients.
Exactly, yeah. Might as well copy as much as possible from it without reinventing. Be a lot easier for them.
FYI, Amy, Amy, my, my deputies, kinda in her spare time, updating the website. She's got a lot of that content built into the next release of our website.
Great thinking.
Okay, anything else, Chuck?
Yep. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Public comment. I'm gonna hold you to three minutes, too.
No problem. If any of you guys don't know me, I'm Pete Bukus from the Fire Department, and I'm here on behalf of the Local 1496 Charity Committee. I just want to thank the Board and the Township for your support in letting us do the pumpkin patch for the third year. We raised some good money, and we've been able to take care of a lot of families and people around Plymouth Township. We developed a relationship with all the principals at the Plymouth Township Schools, and if they need something, they know they can come to us now, and we'll take care of them. Today, we spent $400 on coats for West Middle School for kids that needed coats. We're adopting a couple families for Christmas that are in need, and we're trying to keep all the money from that pumpkin patch that we raised local so it doesn't go to administration fees of some big charity. So, and if you guys know of anybody in the township that could use our assistance, you know, we have some money available. So thanks again for, uh- Thanks again for allowing us to do that. We appreciate it, and we hope to do it again next year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? When, when does this start? What's the date that this begins?
We try to have our pumpkins out there by the first week in October.
Yeah, I, I really encourage you to do it as of October 1st, because I think honestly people make purchases as early as that, and then you'd have more sales.
Yeah.
So I would say as of October 1st, and emphasize it in advance.
We had them out there October 1st this year.
Okay.
And this was our best year. It's growing every year. People are starting to learn to come to Plymouth Fire to get your pumpkins.
And you were selling mums this year, too.
We sold mums this year as well that we got wholesale. Hopefully next year, we'll have a better pumpkin year, and we can, I, I grew a few pumpkins years before. This year, it was so wet, I couldn't get my pumpkin crop in the ground at my parents' farm. But, you know, we had to buy everything wholesale, but we still made more money this year than we did the past years, even with buying wholesale pumpkins. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, then. I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, well, there's only those, those two. I don't know. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Dempsey, and motion to adjourn is adopted.